Meeting the November 4th meeting order and we'll start with.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing this morning, we're going to deviate from the agenda and recognize Taylor Baker from the Humane Society.
Hey, everyone.
Morning.
Hi, I'm Taylor Baker and I work at the Woodley County Humane Society and I've been there for two years. Today, I would like to propose the creation of an animal control position for Woodley County. With my experience at the shelter, working with the public in on-call shifts, I believe that we needed animal control for this county. Because at the moment, neither the staff at the Humane Society nor the officers and deputies have the training or resources to best handle animal-related calls. With an animal control officer, we will have someone who has been trained to handle many different types of situations that involve animal and human safety. I believe this will benefit our county in several different ways. It gives the public an opportunity to call an animal control officer with any animal concerns instead of the officers or the Humane Society. It gives the county an animal officer with actual jurisdiction to respond to these animal calls and not have to wait for our law enforcement officers or cause any kind of confusion of who to call. We have that issue a lot at the shelter. They'll call in all the time, wondering what to do and who to call and we have to direct them to law enforcement officers. It also promotes good ties with the community to further enhance public education and animal care and health. It's good for animal and public safety and it reduces the number of animals in the shelter if strays can be returned to their owners through microchip scanning in the field. Not only will this benefit the city's citizens of our county, it'll also help take a workload off of our officers or deputies. The duties and responsibilities that with the animal control officer would partake in is capturing and imposing dangerous or stray animals, domestic livestock or wildlife. Responding to nuisance complaints, conducting animal welfare checks, investigating cases of animal neglect and cruelty, capturing loose livestock, removing wildlife from homes or properties. Removal of roadkill from the roadway, enforcing licensing laws and other state, county and city laws and regulations that are applicable to the animal control program. Providing expert testimony in court cases, rescuing trapped animals, writing incident reports and providing humane care to animals under the supervision of the animal control officer. At the moment, there are no current local county ordinances that pertain to animals and if possible, I do have some recommendations or ordinances that the animal control officer would enforce and that would also be beneficial to the county. I have brought with me today a sample of a case that we've recently experienced at the shelter and it's a good example of just how much we need an animal control position. Earlier this year, we had a huge boarding case that brought sixty-six dogs and one cat to our shelter. And if we had an animal control at that time to check on this issue every time we had a complaint, which was at least two or three times a month in the span of twenty-five years. We could have gotten this under control at like around ten to fifteen dogs versus sixty-six that overwhelmed the shelter staff. It was a very expensive cost to the county and to the shelter. It was calculated cost was thirty-eight thousand dollars, eight hundred sixty-five eighty-five cents. It could have been way less expensive but on a smaller scale had we had an officer to go out there and check on the situation sooner and answer questions and file the correct paperwork. Also with the shelter, we didn't know, there was no animal control there to help with any kind of legal situation that the staff at the Humane Society had no idea how to handle. And it could have been a lot cheaper on our end if we knew that there was a chance to have a petition to bond versus waiting on answers in a motion of disposition and waiting on the court. Because no one in that field knew what the answers were at the time. With an officer, we want to have to have loopholes to take care of that situation. It had to be a civil route is how the animals were taken, but that turned criminal. And it would give someone a chance to check up on the person once they were sentenced, which is an issue we are having now. We have already had any complaints against this person who is not supposed to have animals, that does have animals and nothing is being done that we know about at the moment. So it's just giving us a real idea of what we're getting into. We went out there, we were given a call about the situation and went to go out. We were told to expect two to three adults and a dozen puppies. When we got there, we were told at least twenty. And then as we went inside, there were, of course, sixty-six dogs. It was just raining over our heads and we just didn't know what to do with that. Though if we had an animal control officer, that situation could have turned out very differently and much less expensive or an emotional trauma for everyone involved. I'm open to any questions and thank you so much for your time.
I do have a couple of questions. Do you envision this being a full-time position in twenty-four hours on-call?
The schedule is still being figured out at the time how it would work with a one person on it. So it's still being considered.
And do you envision this being a fully trained and sworn law officer?
Trained, yes. And we would have to work out the details on how the individual would be, like whether it be deputized or how they would get certain enforcement powers to take care of them.
Okay, when I say fully trained, I'm talking in terms of as our deputies have to do essentially six months training at state police and be trained. Is that what you're looking at or just specific animal control training?
From what I've looked into, there is an animal control class that you can take that covers all of that, but if it would be necessary to go to say an academy or anything else that required it, I would be more than happy to of which.
You looked at any projected costs and how this would fit into or not fit into the budget you have?
That is still being figured out at the moment and I'm currently seeking answers for that.
Anything else for Taylor? Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Next item is the abatement request.
Good morning and thank you very much for your time. I want to apologize. We're trying to do a deposit on prior to meeting again, which is why I got this on the agenda Friday. Since then, a few facts have come up about the building and question and immediate things that are or not existing. So today, what I would like to do is just kind of present to you the opportunity for a local company and to get a sense of your your feedback on the tax abatement in general on this and actually the paperwork I sent out is not ready to be signed. It'll probably have to wait till we get our ducks in a little bit more once I found what I found out about yesterday. But Jason Brooks, resources here, I'd like him to just talk a little bit about his company, about the opportunity he's got to expand, take an existing building and how incentives would help him with that building. And once he's done, then I'll just kind of wrap up. So thank you.
Good morning.
I'm Jason Brooks. I'm for Chromasource. I've been there twenty-three years now. I've been making colored cards for the paint industry. So our customers are Sherman Williams, Benjamin Moore, Valspar. All the major paint companies in the United States, they order their color collateral and we make their color cards here in Woodley County. We ship them all across Canada. There are forty-nine hundred Sherman Williams stores across the country in the Caribbean, Canada, the U.S. We do direct distribution, tell them to each of those stores. We also, then Sherman Williams owns multiple different brands. Dutch Boy, Pratt &amp; Lambert, Conco. So they're in multiple different retail channels other than their heavily earth logo stores. And we have for the twenty years that I've been there, shipping products, we produce the orders, the color strips or the fandex or the colored cards. We ship them to a company in Columbus, Ohio called Vectra. Vectra is a large third-party fulfillment house. So they handle all of the consumer brands division of Sherman Williams Company, their fulfillment. So they're fulfilling into Lowe's stores, Menard Stores, Do-It-Best, multiple different channels. There are some areas of the country I haven't even seen where they ship their product, but I know it all goes out of Columbus, Ohio. This building across the street from us came up for sale. I have a relationship with the decision-makers at Sherman Williams and they've been telling me for years that they don't prefer the relationship with Vectra. They would rather pull everything out of this company from these people that really have a tight hold on all the distribution channel of the product. So we're the manufacturer, another guy's the distribution guy. They want us to do it all. They want us to be the manufacturer and be able to have the capacity to hold the inventory and fulfill the inventory, which is, takes a building. Which for years I thought of adding on to the Chromasource main facility, which would push the employee parking lot to the north. A lot of mechanical tie-in problems. There's a drain to the north of that building that has some we have some barriers to construction. We can't build very far to the north on that old Magnavox complex. So this building came up for sale. We are quoting right now, the stars have aligned where they're going to give us the opportunity. They're redoing one of the major box stores. It's not Home Depot. It's one we, I shop there a lot. Lowe's is going to be redoing their system. And they want us to make both the HGTV side of it and the Valspar side of it, hold that inventory and then do fulfillment. They have a monthly takeaway of around seven million chips, seven million pieces are pulled from Lowe's store monthly across the country and they have twenty-two hundred stores. It's about the equivalent of Sherman Williams, which has forty-nine hundred stores. There's a lot more throughput, traffic at Lowe's store. There's a lot of pink being sold at Lowe's stores and therefore a lot of color cards are being sold. So if I have the building, I think I can get the order, the production side and that would require, I think it's around thirty employees. I don't know exactly what Vectra has, this company in Ohio, who's going to also be bidding for all of this work, but I know that they do the fulfillment for Dutch Boy, Pratt &amp; Lambert and a few other paint lines. I'm trying to get it all here. I want to try to develop a fulfillment solution for Sherman Williams specifically for Lowe's, which Lowe's is a very solid company. They've told me that this is important business. If we get it, we'll probably have it for at least another twenty years. They haven't changed the color system in Lowe's for at least eighteen years. So once they do this, it's a huge cost to change the marketing of the paint displays. They don't do it very frequently. And if we got the order, we would have subsequently production orders annually. We do all the replenishment and all of the.
One quick question. Once you get into this final process on it, you're going to your hiring stages, is your company veteran friendly in your hiring process?
Is this building close to where you're at now, that you're looking at?
It is. It's the rail connected building. You can almost see it just right across the street from us. And that's really why it's important to us, the competency, because we will be delivering product to it on a daily basis. It's nice that it's just directly across the U.S. territory.
And one other question, what's your, what are you looking at as far as wages? What's?
It'll probably be in the fourteen, fifteen dollars an hour for fulfillment for someone who's pulling an order. I'll probably have some material handlers that might be more than that. There'll be management folks that I'll have to hire that will be significantly more than that. More than fifteen dollars an hour, I should say. And I think it will grow. Sherman Williams is the largest paint company in the world and they like chromes. They want to give us more and more and more of their business. And if we have the building and the space holding, that's really been our setback is with every square foot of the building we have right now is full. And even the building we bought in Funky City, that's it's full. I did soil boring samples out there to see if we could add on. It's not a good land with that building on Swidart Street. Soil is not conducive to additional construction and it's about eight miles away from our building. So this building that came up for sale, this particular building, it was built, I think thirteen. It's new. It's very tall. It's a perfect building. I've sent some pictures to my contact at Sherman Williams, she's a big decision maker. So I would, if we had some incentives, it would help because it is a competitive situation that I'm trying to strategy is to change the whole dynamic of the distribution path.
A couple of quick questions. Will these, are these wages compatible to the same as what you, your current employees have at the same level of skill?
Yeah, I'd say so.
Okay. And then you need to have the building and have process in place before you can make this bid. Is that correct?
I'm speculating.
Okay.
There's some risk.
So to a degree, you're speculating with some of our money as well?
I'll use the building. You know, I'm going to buy the building. And I have, we have an enormous fulfillment business that we do now in our main facility. I would put it in there if I had to. It would give us more production options. We're constrained now. I would use the building. I have a backup plan, but it's also, I've asked you at Woodley, will you commit to it? And they're saying, no, we won't. We don't do that. They don't, they're a giant, giant entity and they don't. I wish it was a stronger partnership, but they don't make commitments. If we have a building, I think then we have, we'll get the job.
And if you have this building, is it your intent to keep the Swidart Street building as well? It'd be necessary? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is this a project that you see yourself moving forward on with and without this tax abatement?
I'd like to have the tax abatement. It's going to help me in terms of structuring my pricing structure with the customer. If I knew I had some support, I could be more competitive against the guys in Ohio. Otherwise, I'd eat into the competitive nature of it. I'd like to get in the building though, even long-term. I've had to tell them over the years that we've had a few projects. We do work with Benjamin Moore. We do work with Bayer, which is at Home Depot, a separate company. We've had to tell them over the years that we can't take on some of their projects because we just don't have the strength. So that puts a set of competitive disengagement.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chromasource is one of the more interesting, we need other mechanic companies and so we're very hopeful that we can help them. This building is in the TIF district. So you might say to yourself, well, why didn't redevelopment put something together? Because the building's finished and because of the structure that Chromasource was looking for, the tax abeyments made more sense. However, like I said, to start with, there's just a few particulars about the building and existing abatement that I want to make sure we get straightened away. The project's moving fast, which is why I'm here today. So I guess I'm not going to actually ask you to vote on an abatement. I just wanted Jason to hear from the council, mainly just not necessarily a vote of confidence, but just a general comment about offering incentives to help him win this business. I think for today, we're just looking at a few general comments and then you will see me back to the next council with everything I can speak for whatever particular. So with that, thank you and any comments?
Quick question. Since it's in the TIF district, the abatement, how does that affect the income for the TIF versus the income for the general fund?
It would, yeah, it would, it's abating taxes that would normally go into the TIF and then once the TIF sun sets, then those would start going back.
So it's not going to affect county general at this point, just the TIF?
Right, but because it's a bigger, also because of the timing redevelopment, knew about the project, but they didn't necessarily vote on it. Obviously, this is the governing body on abatement. Which is why we're just having a break a little bit, but we did want to get in front of you. I did want Jason to get a feel for council's interest in helping him win the business.
Can you talk at all about the existing abatement on the building?
Well, so I believe it was a ten-year abate. I don't believe it started in thirteen, which is again things I'm trying to work with the TIF to turn. And I believe it's already gone through four years. So it may be something that's transferable or we may close that and start at the one, all of which affects the TIF per se. But everything I want to make sure that we give Chromasource, you know, the best opportunity to be competitive, to understand the increment on the building and what that, what that tax abatement would actually mean in reality. So it's a little complicated, but I believe, I believe the abatement's been going on.
Okay, sure.
I'm glad to see a local company grow.
No, we're glad you're here.
We're at one hundred and seventy-nine people. We grew through COVID as Americans were home.
Yeah.
That was a change for us. I didn't know what we were doing.
Would be exciting to go over the two-hundred number, wouldn't it, of employees?
Yeah, it would.
Okay.
Put for us again in a month. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Sheriff Gatten for his transfer request.
Morning.
Good morning.
I've come before you to ask to move the twenty thousand, move the ten thousand series into the twenty thousand series into the janitorial. We had an officer leave right, choose a different career path right before COVID hit. So we haven't hired anybody because one, we didn't want to abandon the building next year at that time. So we saved some money out of that fine item for today. That's what I'm requesting to be moved over to janitorial, which during COVID, we bought more janitorial supplies than we probably ever purchased before for the jail building to keep it clean.
Make a motion to approve the transfer?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and opposed the same. Next up is Scott Wagner, Health Department.
That says additional appropriations, but it's just a little transfer. This money held over from a grant. We don't spend all the grant, we need to keep it. This is money being spent on that, some for a computer, actually for my computer. The reason why it's fifteen hundred is because I have two and a half decades of information on that. And then you have to hire faster computers. I've posted a communication in five years, so.
Are you hard on him?
What's that?
Are you hard on him or what?
It's demanding, yes.
Second to motion.
Who moved?
I made a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and opposed the same. Next item on the agenda is the two thousand twenty-one salary ordinance approval. Are you speaking on that?
Yeah, so it's ordinance number twenty-two.
Yeah, so it's ordinance number twenty twenty dash twelve. And the only thing really is the part time wage, I've seen it at the twenty two forty eight. You guys would like to. I mean, I don't know what you would do with that, there is a few people at that. It's the dirty officers and the service officers. That are at that twenty two forty eight.
Is that where we need to be, is that? Is everybody else around or? Well, that's what we had established as the maximum for our part time. Right. So the question is. Do we need to increase? Well, I mean, that's up for council, but my personal opinion is no. Uh, when we set that maximum, we made it clear the idea was that. You would progress to that maximum. Correct. There are several employees who was, who were taken directly to the maximum. That's for the department head, you know, not for us. I think our maximum is where it needs to be personally, but I'm open to further discussion on that. I'd agree with you. I think we're good there.
This. Ordinance, as it's been presented to us, you have, you have vetted this and all these numbers you have went through and they are exactly what they should be.
Yeah. And, and Carol, double checking on everything.
Because this is something that obviously is beyond the scope of what our abilities are to check these numbers, that's the reason I ask that.
Yep.
Make a motion that we approve twenty twenty dash twelve as presented.
Second. A motion and a second, any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and opposed the same. Commissioners report.
Okay, we got a lot of good things going on right now. First thing, uh, most important thing we have is we're going forward with that need study for the corrections facilities. And that will be, uh, by the end of November, first of December, we'll have a decision on that or a. We'll have some. Decisions to make as far as what we're going to do with jail, with, with corrections. And council will be involved in all that, we're gonna have to discuss financing and, and, you know, how we go forward with this, but it's a. It's a great program that we're going through there, all the performance surfaces is working with our judges, the corrections, the jail. With, with probation, trying to determine where do we, where do we need to be in for the next twenty years, which is very difficult, but. We have to do that before we make a decision on how we go forward with either a correction facility, a jail or both. Uh, one thing we have to look at right now that the, uh, the bond prices are as low as they've ever been. So that's a great opportunity for us. And when you look at construction costs, construction costs are going up between seven and nine percent per year right now. So we're gonna have to really, really take a hard look at what we want to do. But that'll be, we'll be bringing that to you probably in December. So. Good things going on there. Uh, we, Mercury Internet is in the process of upgrading all their systems and, and bringing in new equipment for internet services, broadband internet. For the, the communities, uh, we'll see how that works out. But they're telling us they'll be done by the first of, well, by the end of December. So that's, that's another good thing. Lot of other good things going on, but, uh, we reappointed some people to the health board, uh, our meeting Monday. And. I guess that's it right now.
All right, thank you. Moving on, last item on the agenda is, uh, last month's meeting minutes.
Let's refer to the minutes as they were presented.
One second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand, opposed the same. Is there anything, uh, from the public that anyone would like to add? From the audience? I'd love that if you did, yep, that'd be great. Tell it to go away.
As you see everywhere, the numbers are going up. That, that we can will be turning orange today. So that means our numbers, positive numbers going up. Uh, I think a lot of twofold, uh, one, we had a lot of kind of get living transmission. So our residents have all seen positive residents and positives there. And it sounds like wildfire would be getting placed down. So we are seeing more positive numbers there. We're also seeing more positives in schools. So kids, I don't know if they're passing at school, but they're definitely getting at home. We're also seeing parents impacted too. So schools are passing, I think their kids are getting home, you know, loud people taking other kids to school. Athletics together. Secondly, uh, we have more free testing. More and more free testing sites, there's almost a testing site every county connected to the M and I. All our people go to Allen County, two sites, free testing for all the county people. Just, we would have to ask you guys for money if we were to do it here. There's no way to do it with the money that they're giving us from the state. So Allen County asked us to partner with them, so we did, and we have two free sites over there, so we're seeing a lot more testing. Latest number is about sixty three hundred. But they kind of keep having tests for that, so that's almost two thousand since July. So we've got a lot more testing. So you're gonna see more positives, especially more false positives, it's a testing still plus. So you're gonna see numbers going up, which means, uh, we've already talked to some of the schools about restricting tenants at, at activities. They may, uh, to do some of that way, they may restrict academic activities, so we'll see what they have to do here. But almost every day we have somebody going home from some species down there. Supposedly have flu going on too, so it's just gonna increase. The velocity of illness seems to continue to decrease. Uh, we, uh, the government has decided that we are not gonna contact anybody under the age of fifty. Of the first three hundred and fifty people that were positive, most of them under the age of fifty just don't have them. Days and they're over it, it is that much velocity, they, people over the age of fifty aren't getting that. So we are still contacting everybody that are over the age of fifty, this last week we had about three people that had come in the hospital. So we are still seeing infections. Statewide, you are seeing about twenty percent now, uh, hospital visits from COVID, which is up from ten percent in July. So we expect it as the temperatures get cooler, go inside, you're gonna store time people and you're gonna have more numbers. So, but luckily we're not seeing a lot more deaths for that. The county's been really lucky in that situation. So you may see some changes, but we'll get through this. We expect this to happen and continue through the holidays into the year, but the increased amount, hopefully by February, March, it's going down. Hopefully by end of spring or early summer, it's mostly gone.
Would you recap this briefly, when you talk about orange, what that means?
Yeah, so there's four levels, uh, the state uses, they use three different indexes to predict your color. There's blue, which is five or less percent of the people transmission. And then orange is one to one, or excuse me, five to two. Uh, there's a red, oh, yeah, yes, and there's yellow, blue, yellow, red, blue, yellow, orange, red. So we are on the upper half of that level here. It means that they're gonna ask us to restrict school functions to some extent. So we need to talk since we already have them yesterday, about the school system about that. Restricting, restrictions activities, school activities. It's not all, I'll give you about kind of great, kind of great living, but we do, will emphasize to those managers that they probably shouldn't restrict all this. I know they're screening their people every day, they get tested twice a week. But, you know, the testing, the science of testing is just not there for everybody. You can test if they have the first or second or third day of illness. And even have symptoms, sometimes it'll still be negative in the test. It just doesn't get over fifty percent until after that fourth day of illness. So it's hard to say. Some people have symptoms for two days before. Some of them have any symptoms at all, so. Orange means we're gonna restrict activities at schools and that.
Nothing to do with our retail stores at this time?
The governor decides to act on his own. I don't know that. We could, ultimately Dr. Kirk could say retail or whatever couldn't do that, but we've never, ever done that. That's what we exist in. I think the last thing they restricted that was tuberculosis outbreaks. So I doubt that we would ever get to that, but we're. Maybe we would, but it'd be hard. We'd have to see extreme amount of homeless people we got to. Locally, we would say you can't do that. Governor. I'll briefly about restaurants.
So what does that mean to them with orange and what's the expectation, what are you gonna be telling them about? And what are you telling the public?
Yeah, so far right now, uh, with restaurants, we're still going after them with the number masks. We still get usually complaint every week about somebody. So we, first thing to do is to witness it, see whether they are actually. Vaguely, send them a letter that they're trying to get out. Well, I would say ninety nine percent of restaurants are compliant, which is what we're supposed to be doing. They don't always wear correctly. But they need to have a mask in case. Right now, I think the governor probably will go back a little bit, but now he said he could be full capacity for restaurants if you keep them six foot apart. You can't do that, so I think maybe a turn back on that a little bit.
What would be a ballpark figure for a free testing site?
We did what now?
What would be a ballpark figure for a free testing site in what we got?
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Just provided for you?
Hundred thousand. Oh, we've already given a hundred thousand. Well, first of all, you have to secure a site because you don't want sick people coming into places where your vaccinations are healthy. You have to have a building, you have to pay for utilities, you have to pay for staff, they want us to have at least four people there. So registration, a swabber, somebody packs it and security. Then you're gonna have to have, uh, they want us to do on until at least after five o'clock, two days' week and all weekends. So you're gonna have to provide staff for that time period as well. And it's hard to find nurses or qualified staff to do that. And this would be for a period of two years.
For a period of how long? That hundred thousand will go for two years?
Hundred thousand per year, so.
Hundred thousand per year.
They're lost due to two years, which is what their contract is. There's just no way for us to be able to do it. Rent, clean up the place every day, to sanitize and then also have all the staff. But you gotta pay them, they're what, thirty five hours a week? Unless you can find enough part time people, where they're not full time, but full time, then you got to provide. It was tough and Allen County, as big as they are, they have a tough time as well. They're still having a tough time meeting the demand of having staff there. There's the other counties around the state who took that on and then they had to cut back. They just can't do it. Be tough. I, I still only get. Two or three phone calls a week. Most people are aware of the sites and most people are complaining to us. I guess two or three, it's not much. Vaccinations, the next, another big thing. Vaccinations, uh, federal government has bought vaccine. They are planning on shipping that at the end of November, early December to hospitals first and long term care. Then, once that happens, which will be several months for us there, then it may go to first responders, their families, then maybe to the general public. I don't think they're gonna need to the general public unless it's a miracle before March.
Do you get reports from hospitals outside of the county, of Whitley County residents that are admitted for COVID?
Yes, so everybody that's just tested, um, it goes into one system. And we can go in that system and see the county of residents. Now, a lot of times they get that next step because we have seven zip codes for what we count. And so you can be living in Busco proper, but if, or Busco, then you could be Philbrook or Allen. And St. Kirsten and Huntington and Port Bay. So a lot of times we're calling them and saying, hey, no, that person is in the system, they said you're customers. So we can get a copy of that, we will get that, we don't make the phone calls and try to keep up with people. I guess that we've had about six hundred and fifty positive, uh, six thousand people tested. About ten percent and still success.
Ten percent have tested, but a population about three percent or less.
Right, and I think that, um, we probably have a lot more people positive than we know. But we're now finally getting data from the West Coast, uh, from the springtime, when they actually did serology typing, actually went out and drew blood at the population general. The tests, you know, kind of like what Eli Lewis is doing, they found that when they had possibly. Like they did some in Modesto, California, they tested three thousand people, fifty percent of them are positive already, but they wouldn't show signs. You know, that, that's basically only ten percent. So it's much more widespread, there's been much more exposure than people know. Just so they can, much of the population is throwing symptoms.
How many survival rate?
That's the same as, they're about higher than this federal government. Right now it's ninety nine point six percent of exposure to survival for a United States citizen. Or probably ninety nine point nine. High. Trail's off the numbers after that. And so we only had six. When you look at people who passed away, um, most of them are over the age of seventy. Those who weren't over the age of seventy had strepillitis problems or they waited too long. And we're still seeing that now, um, especially with older folks, they're waiting too long to go to the hospital. If they get a cold, if they can get over it, and by the time they are convinced to go to the hospital, they're already way too sick and they're already on downwind decline. So trying to emphasize to the elderly population, you know, if you just, if you got a cold for three or four days, you just seem to not be feeling any better, you need to go to the hospital. You need to go to the doctor immediately. We have a regimen of medicines that they give you now, upfront, it's right out of that, back on your feet. Don't wait, don't wait. It's not the same as cold or flu for those people. In fact, I heard a study the other day, compare a forty year old to an eighty year old and it's a thousand times worse for an eighty year old. So it's really, has a dramatic effect for people over the ages six.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. What you hope that way too, so the vaccine comes, if you do have a grand swell, that will result in a cancer that may. Need to take Jackal for the whole time or who's. Ales cover, we'll see what happens with that. But now I don't see a lot of people saying they want it, but even if you got twenty percent, Whitley County that wants it, that's still kind of.
And that's because even though the federal government is gonna provide the vaccine, they're not providing distribution or.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Or, and right now we were told that they're not providing supplies.
Oh, really?
So needles, syringes, office swabs, Band-Aids, gloves. So we have already preactively ordered that, we've ordered five thousand of all that. So hopefully we're gonna have to hit it with her, because just talking about springtime, we're gonna have masks downs. Or hopefully we could have someone for six. Sure, we'll have.
That, one more question regarding that, are you able to find US suppliers for most of those as opposed to?
Yes, we got everything except gloves. We do have still a shipment for us, a supply of latex gloves from each one and one. Twelve years now, they're getting a little old. We do have some natural gloves, I guess, a month or so. We do have some natural gloves, I guess, I'm not sure. Gloves are almost impossible to find. We'll do our best.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Barrett? Councilman over to you. Councilman Comfort?
I would just ask praying people in our county to pray for our nation for peace in the streets until there's a decision on the election.
Also, I'd like to compliment our clerk's office with the election process. It really runs smooth.
Yep. Councilman Warner?
Nothing.
Councilman Hodges?
Piggyback on Councilman Barrett's comment, the fact that I've never had to stand in line ever when I voted in Whitley County. I don't know if I've ever missed an election and I stood in line this time, but it was a very smooth process. It was ran very well. You could tell it was organized, there was thought that was put into it and we owe them a very big, congratulations on the job. Very well done.
Councilman Wheeler?
Since Dale's here, I'd like Dale to get up and, and give us a little update on the Larwell Sewer since the council was involved in approving that with the commissioners to use some of the commissioners' funds.
Yeah, so the Larwell Sewer project extension out to Red Star so they can expand. It's moving forward. We're working on where the extension will go and right away. There are probably maybe four residential, forced to tie into that. And we are doing our best to make sure that that is as little expense put on them as possible. In fact, Red Star is even paying to, to vacate the songs, are the, the subjects, since they'll hop and they'll travel. And we, we have the seed of funds to pay for that, as we've talked about. And so there's still plans that, that will be fairly well completed by the end of the year. And so, sorry, I'm going to stand and do the official.
Thank you, Dale.
And I have nothing to add. Meeting adjourned.